Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's special town meeting. My name is Bill Guevere. I'm the deputy moderator. And I'm here because our moderator, Walter Eichel, is out of state. And so you're stuck with me for at least tonight. To my right is our town clerk, Lucia Longhurst. And a couple of things to begin. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I would just like to take a minute. Every year, we lose so many good people in the town of Norton and so many people who have given so much to the community. And I can't recognize all of them, but I'd like to take a moment to recognize two who have passed away recently. One is Paul Helmreich, a professor at Wheaton College, a person who wrote the history of the college, and someone who served on our finance committee for over 40 years or close to 40 years, and was just a tremendous influence in town. One of my good friends and a very giving person to whom we owe a lot. And the other one, of course, is much more recently. My neighbor and our deputy police chief, Tommy Peterson, who very unexpectedly and tragically passed away. And Tommy was a great member of the community, a Norton guy, who represented everything that was right about the town. So I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence in memory of those two. Thank you. Now I would ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, a few rules before we start going just in case anybody's here for the first time. I don't think we have to worry. I think we need to dispense with the find a seat and don't stand because there's plenty of seats. If you are not a registered voter in the town of Norton, you are welcome to visit, but you must sit up in those sections up to my right there and straight ahead where the non-voter signs are. But if you are a registered voter, please don't sit there because in case we vote with a show of hands or something, your vote will not be counted. So if you're a registered voter, please make sure that you're sitting down below. If you wish to address this meeting tonight, you must do so only after being recognized by the moderator. There are microphones in the back and one microphone down here. Please move to one of those if you wish to speak on anything and wait to be recognized. When speaking, please identify yourself by name and address to help the clerk for the record. Please try and keep your remarks brief and to the point and centered on the topic that's being discussed. All speakers at this meeting will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and by everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks should be directed to the moderator. And while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination-type discussion from the floor. In recognizing people to speak, I will endeavor to call upon those who have not yet spoken on a topic before I call upon someone who's trying to speak for the second time on the same topic. I will recognize motions to move the question. But if, in my opinion, there are still people waiting to speak and there has not been enough discussion fully, I can and will exercise my authority to not accept a motion under those circumstances. If a standing vote is required, you'll be instructed to stand at your seats and the vote will be counted. If any other type of vote happens, we'll deal with that when it does. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion tonight, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator and the clerk. Please prepare your amendment in writing. Bring it up here. If you're moving an article that has been recommended by the finance committee and moved by the finance committee, you must also present that motion to the clerk and it must be done in the proper form. I remind you that no motion to, well, I shouldn't say it. Forget the motion to reconsider because there's only three articles on tonight. So telling you you have to wait for three articles to be acted on would be kind of silly. So tonight, if it comes up, I will accept a motion to reconsider at any time after an article has been completed. There will probably be requests this evening to allow non-voters to speak on certain articles. This must be done by a motion voted on by the meeting. Please keep in mind that these people have information that's important to the topic at hand. And please extend them the courtesy of being heard. And moderator Eichel has asked me also at this point to say that he has an opening on the finance committee, which, as you know, is a very important committee. And it's appointed by the moderator. And if anyone is interested, you must be a registered voter in the town. If you're interested, please contact moderator Eichel. His email address is on the town website. You can contact him and he would be glad to hear from anybody who's interested. Having said all that, Madam Clerk, has there been a return on this warrant?
Mr. Moderator, I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest: Michael J., Mayor, Constable, Norton, July 22, 2021.
Thank you. Then we'll now proceed with the warrant. Article one.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Vice Chair of the Finance Committee.
I move that the town vote to pay the following unpaid bill incurred in a prior fiscal year using existing fiscal year 2022 funds in account 001241570 in the amount of $1,114.25 for the inspection department to vendor rebuildex of Plymouth County.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to pay a bill that was incurred in a prior fiscal year. At a special town meeting, the law requires that any vote to do that must be by a nine-tenths majority vote. I don't know where they got that from, but that's what it takes, is a nine-tenths majority vote. I will endeavor, when it's time to vote, I will endeavor to make that decision by a unanimous, maybe one way or the other vote. On doing that, failing that, we would have a standing vote count to determine the count. Is there any discussion on Article one? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article one, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article one passes unanimously as declared by the moderator. Article two.
Mr. Moderator.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town vote to approve Article two as printed in the August 9, 2021 special town meeting warrant, thereby approving, confirming, and authorizing pursuant to GL Chapter 40, Section 59, and MGL Chapter 23A, Section 3A through 3, Section 3F, all of the actions set forth therein.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article two? Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Moderator, I ask for a vote to allow the representatives from the company to speak.
Okay, we have a request to allow non-voters to speak. The moderator would entertain a motion to, and I apologize in advance for mangling any names that I mangle. Steve Scheinkopf, President of Yale Appliance, Leo Goncalves, Vice President of Operations, Yale Appliance, Lynn Taker, where is she? I'm not going to get her name wrong.
Taker.
Ta, ta, I don't know. Takers is, that's probably not even close. But I apologize to her. She's the Government Tax Incentives Consultant for Yale Appliance, and Jeff O'Neil, Codine Capital Partners. I'd entertain a motion to allow those non-voters to speak.
So moved.
Mr. Sweeney moves. Is there a second? Second. And any discussion? All those in favor of allowing the people to speak, please raise your hands. All those opposed, motion passage unanimously as declared by the moderator. And who would like to lead off on the discussion? When you come up, please state your name and address, please. Yeah, please, just, you can go right to that microphone there. That's fine. Yeah, please, it's an old tradition.
Okay, hi, my name is Steve Scheinkopf. You didn't mangle my name, so.
Well, that's a first.
I'm Leo Goncalves, 27 John A. Moriarty, North Attleboro.
Yes, sir. And would you like to address the meeting? Would you like to tell us what the purpose of this article is for you? Whoever wants to go, be my guest.
Sure. We're thinking of moving to this town with a 220,000-square-foot facility in your town. I have a short presentation. I don't control the presentation, so I just say click. Thank you.
It's funny, my wife does the same thing.
I haven't controlled, this is my seventh presentation to the town of Norton. I haven't controlled one of them. Most of them have been through Zoom. So anyway, we were founded in 1923. In 1932, my grandfather bought into it in the middle of the recession. We're an appliance store. We don't sell hammers or nails. We do everything that's appliance-oriented. That's sales, installation, and service. That's what we do. You know, we sell most of the brands you know. GE, LG, Whirlpool, KitchenAid, some of the ones you might not know, like La Corneau and Sub-Zero and Wolf and Thermador. Hopefully, some of you are customers. Hopefully, some more of you will be our customers when we move into your town. Next slide, please. And this is what we do. Refrigerators, dishwashers, laundry, cooking, ventilation, sinks, barbecues. Next slide, please. Okay. Right now, we are operating out of three locations now for warehouse, for our operations center. And we had to lease something this year, another 25,000 square foot, just for more warehouse space. We're going to consolidate that all here in Norton. Next slide, please. And to give you an idea, we bought our warehouse in Stoughton less than 10 years ago. It was 85,000 square feet for $2 million. We bought another warehouse for, I think, 1.7. And this one is 17.7 that we know of in $1 million in personal property, to give you an idea how tough warehousing and distribution's been. And just so you know, this isn't traditional warehousing. This isn't all night. This is, we start at roughly 6:30. The trucks come back at 2:30. The most trucks we've ever had are 17 on the road. We do have service vans, but those all start from people's homes. We don't start 77 vehicles in your town. And typically, what we liked about it is it's just one, you go on one street, you hang a left, and we're on the highway. Most of our business right now is Boston, South Shore, and the Framingham area, where our stores are. So, next, next, please. Okay. Now, we signed on for 15 jobs. Right now, we need 40 that we know of. But these aren't regular jobs. We're not paying, we got the message a long time ago that you can't pay somebody $12 and get a loyal employee that's fun to talk to for customers. We pay a minimum of 20. Our benefits package between medical, dental, and everything else is profit share, 401K match. Then there's quarterly bonuses that they pretty much hit. Runs anywhere from 23,000 to 30,000 per person with medical. And those are the kind of people that are going to be in your town. We do tuition reimbursement. You've got Wheaton College here. That's a good possible synergy. Next, please. And they love to go to eat. And, you know, I said this every time. We, in Stoughton, there's two places we go, Deegs or Doyle's, for some reason. And Leo and I usually go around 1:15 and there'll be two other tables out of the 12 that they have with Yale people, and probably about four takeout orders for the people at Warehouse because they have the money to spend in your town. And that's what they do. Next slide, please. Giving back is a huge part of what we do. You know, I'm on the board of Foundation for Metro West. We give out millions of dollars. We have our own Yale Foundation. That's for veterans and basically hunger relief, as it was last year when a lot of people couldn't get food. We've been in Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We were instrumental in getting hospitals to recognize Duchenne's muscular dystrophy. You know, I've been on the board of Veterans Legal Services that keep veterans from being evicted from their housing. And we're still in your town, actually, until last year when they wouldn't let us deliver to your senior centers. We deliver clothing and everything else. Because we used to be in Mansfield. We used to be in the Forbes Industrial Park. We had to leave there to go to Stoughton. Now we're hopefully coming back. So in a lot of ways, we actually never left. So, next slide, please. So this is what we're going to do is, you know, we are privately held, because I privately hold it. You know, the company headquarters. We're going to have a lot of good jobs here. You know, certainly, there's 100 jobs here. And, you know, we promised 15. And hopefully, we get a lot more because we need a lot more. And over time, you know, we only have a 2% turnover, 1% to 2% turnover. More and more of the town, hopefully, will work in this facility. You know, you have permit fees. The vans, they said, that won't be parked there, you'll get the excise tax from, along with the trucks. Again, we don't want to cause an impact. We want to be, we want to be a good neighbor. Those trucks will be in and out. And there's only a few of them. And they're going to go on the highway. Next slide, please. I guess this is where Mike takes over. But basically, the tax revenue to the town is about $1,200,000. And the TIF is about $1,000,001 over a 10-year period. And just so you know, I don't plan on leaving in 10 years if I'm still around. I mean, you don't just move a facility. After 10 years, it'll probably take us two to move in and two to think about ever leaving. So, you know, you'll be stuck with us probably for 20 or whoever takes over after me. So thank you for your consideration. And I'll turn over any questions you might have or whatever questions you might have.
Mr. Town Manager.
So this is a 10-year TIF that we're asking you to approve for Yale Appliance. As Steve said, he's been to many meetings in Norton recently with the Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and now here. And over the 10 years, as Steve said, the savings to the company will be $1,086,596. And the increased taxes to the town will be $1,235,754. And that includes excise tax, which is estimated now at about $26,000 a year for the vehicles that the company owns. And, you know, when we spoke with Steve and learned more about his company, we hope that you'll agree that it's a company that we'd like to see in Norton. I know last week, there was an ice cream social for the kids in Norton. And all the ice cream was donated by New England Ice Cream, another company that had a TIF. And from talking with Steve, it feels like Yale Appliance is that type of company. A company that'll get involved in the community. And as far as even the taxes they pay, they'll be more involved with the community and helping us out in other ways. And as far as TIFs, you know, that's what we look for. We look for companies that we think will benefit the community, companies that will work with us. And I just wanted to point out that right now, we receive a list every year from our assessors of the top 10 taxpayers in town. And right now, in the top five, four of the top five have a TIF or had a TIF. Alnylon Pharmaceuticals is the number-one taxpayer in town. Number three is Auto Parts International, who had a TIF. And, you know, just to show the fact that you don't, after the TIF ends, you don't leave. They're still here. Obviously, they made a big investment and they're still here. Number four is Horizon Beverage. And number five is Home Market Foods. So even though they're getting TIFs, they're four of the five top taxpayers in the town of Norton. So I hope you'll see the benefit and we'll support the TIF. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article two? Mr. Wiggins.
Peter Wiggins. Peter Wiggins, 157 Mansfield Ave., Trail 43 in Harvey Manor, Norton, and I vote yes on Article two because we need more business in this town of Norton. We need more tax revenue in this town of Norton. And it would be nice to have a good business that comes to Norton and then brings the tax revenue. So I vote yes on Article two. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Jim Vagelis, 12 Downing Drive. So basically here, not so much to, I know you want to keep it on point, but the problem that I have with this whole thing is the fact that we were at the special town meeting a few years ago, talking about this project, getting the zoning changed. And at the time that I was up there talking, it was, I referred to a TIF. And somebody, and I don't remember exactly who it was, was over my right shoulder and said, "There'll be no TIFs on this project." And I said, "I'll believe it when I see it." So, and I have a problem with that because this was rolled out. We got people to this town to vote to change the zoning on this particular parcel of property. And from my understanding, I was out of town, but I guess Home Depot got a TIF as well. And I wasn't there for that. So, as I would have said that at that meeting as well. I talked to the boys from Yale. They seemed like nice guys. My wife made a really good point about the devil you know is better than the devil you don't. I think what they had to say was really nice. They seem like they take corporate responsibility very seriously. I think that's great. But I have a big problem with the way this project was rolled out. And that's why I'm here to talk about this is because the TIF was, oh, no, it's never going to happen. Everybody thinks that there's just going to be all this money rolling into the town right out of the gate. It's not the case. There's $1 million-plus that is sitting on the sidelines for the better part of 10 years. Now, you've got other buildings. Home Depot was 100,000 square feet. So I'm assuming it's about half that. I'm just guessing because this is 200,000. So what's next, is my question? That's the problem that I have. So I'm not saying whether I support this or I don't support it because, you know what? I'm a pro-business guy. And I've gone through TIFs and done things in town. So I know what it's like to go to these things and have people, you know, talk and say what they have to say. But the fact of the matter is, the way this whole project was rolled out to get the zoning changed, no TIFs, oh, it's going to be all this money. There's not going to be, on the other side of things, having a conversation with the condign guys, oh, we're going to put all flex R&amp;D out there because that's what you guys want. And now we have warehousing. I'm not saying that these guys are going to put up a facility that's going to be bad for us, but what's next? That's all I have to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So my name is Justin Keath, 142 Oak Street, near Norton. I'm also an employee of Yale Appliance. I've been living in this town for two years and I've been working at Yale for almost a year. I have to say, this is, out of all the companies I've worked with, I'm only 31 years old, but this is the best company I've worked for by far. They've been really great to me, my family. I have two kids in Norton schools. I have a wife here and a family that just moved here and bought a house. So I support Yale coming here. And I think they're going to do a really great job here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bob Briscoe, 3 Burnham Road. I'd just like to say, I've been in town for a number of years now. And we have some nice business in town today, as Bill mentioned, Mr. Moderator. This town, we need to grow our structure and our infrastructure. And this company, I've looked at it. And there's a number of other companies you can look at. And they have a good record. They're a nice company. And we ought to be welcoming them into Norton. Like I said, we've got a lot of nice companies in Norton. The tax revenue is good for the town. The TIF is good for the company. And I think we really seriously need to look at bringing good companies into this town. We have some, we need more. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanis.
I just wanted to address the comment, forgive me, I've forgotten his name or didn't quite get his name, about someone in the special town meeting said something to the fact that, A, there'll be no TIFs, and B, it'll be R&amp;D flex construction. I was on the planning board, in fact, shared the planning board at the time of the rezoning. I remember very distinctly talking about the rezoning and in particular, the fact that Norton had the lowest percentage of industrial and commercial property in any other area of community besides Rehoboth. Never was it said by anyone on the planning board, and frankly, I don't remember anyone saying that there would be no TIF. With all due respect, we'd love to have development in there without TIFs. But TIFs are an attractive, an attraction to businesses. And if that's what it takes to get them there, then so be it. 10 years from now, God willing, they're here. They're paying 100% and perhaps 100% on an addition. But it's just, it's a little disconcerting to hear that someone said there's not going to be any TIFs. That was never said from anyone on the planning board, it's my knowledge. No one in a position to actually say that said it.
Thank you. Mr. Slattery.
Tim Slattery, 3630 Street. My question is, the TIF, these people say they're renting, I'm not opposed to companies coming into town and lessening the tax rate for the residents on their private property, but they're coming in and leasing the building. So who gets the TIF and what advantage to Yale is the TIF? I mean, they're not getting the TIF. The landlord gets the TIF. What is the advantage of it?
Mr. Town Manager, do you want to answer that?
To answer your question, the TIF goes with the property. So if there is a tax break on the property, it's obviously going to, if they're leasing the property, it's going to affect what they pay in their lease. And it gets passed down. So if they buy the building, the TIF stays with them.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
George Hatch, 381 South Wistert Street. We had a TIF three, four years ago for, I hope I get their name right, Home Product Foods.
Home Market Foods.
Okay, thank you, Peter. And they advocated the same thing that I heard tonight. 17 trucks, did I hear? We heard 20 trucks. We have more than 20 trucks in Elway. These are heavy diesels. Are you counting those that are bringing your product to your warehouse? Home Product Foods did not. And we are suffering from that. And I just think this is just a repeat of what happened when this other company came and asked for a TIF. And another thing that bothers me is that these people have so much interest in the town, but yet they don't buy the building right up front. Let's get somebody that's willing to buy a building and give them the TIF. And furthermore, their incentive, TIFs, I believe, are an incentive to have people come to our community. The incentive for these people to come to our community is 495. That is a hell of an incentive for any trucking company to roll out of their front door and go maybe less than 500 feet and get on a major highway. They don't need a TIF for that. They're getting enough revenue, saving enough revenue. If they went to the industrial park over in Norton, they would be pouring more fuel in their trucks just to get to that commodity that we're offering. I am against the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Would one of you gentlemen like to respond Thank you. Would one of you gentlemen like to respond to the gentleman's question?
First of all, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Um, we're not a trucking company, um, we're a logistics company. The, the trucks that you get in, we get trailers that come in, uh, off 495, they come and they go. We're not, they, they don't stay, uh, they get offloaded, um, we have, hopefully proper times, you know, everything is monitored by the computer. Um, as soon as they come in, they go out. I don't know about that other company, but I can only tell you, we have, we're at our peak right now, we're at seventeen trucks, um, and then the trucks that come in, but, you know, there's one or two of the trailers per day, and that's, that's it, and they come and they go. As far as me buying the building, I'd like to do that. Uh, I'm not a lease type of guy, and if the interest rates hold and business goes well, um, I'd like to buy, to be quite honest with you. And I used to be a lot more sure of myself before last year. Last year, I was like, you know, twenty-twenty, we had great expansion plans, but now, you know, uh, to be honest, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I, I don't know, you know, we're all wearing masks again, right? So, I don't know what's going to happen, but it is my intention to absolutely buy this building, if I can. You know, if things stay the way they are, I'll be permanent. And as far as the trucks, you won't see any other than the, the trailers we bring in, and the seventeen that we got. That's it.
Any other questions or discussion? See someone coming down, or just, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Keith, I didn't even see you there, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move the question.
Okay, did, before I accept your vote, did you want to say something, ma'am, if, I, because we haven't had excessive discussion, so Keith, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on hold for a second and just let this person, it already gotten up speed. Yes?
Hi, Kristy LaCast, nineteen Downing Drive. My question is more about the trucks that bring your product in, you said two a day. What time do they come? How long do they stay? Just curious about that.
So, generally, they come anywhere between seven and nine AM, and they generally tell you unload them, so it could be anywhere from a half hour to an hour, depending on what type of freight, how many fridges are on it, or how many appliances are on the, on the truck.
Yes, sir.
Steve O, Steve O'Connor, sixteen Downing Drive. Uh, I just want to point out, with this today's market, I don't think there's a need to give Yale a TIF to have them come to Norton. I think they're coming without a TIF. Um, I think that, and that's pretty much all I have to say, I don't think this TIF is necessary. Market conditions are great right now for real estate. This is a very unique area, a 495, easy on, easy off. I don't think a TIF is required.
Okay, is there any more discussion, or should we move to the vote? Seeing no hands, we will move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Two, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Article Two passes by majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Adam Vice Chair.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, to authorize the Select Board, in the interest of public safety and without further authority, to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district on any way in Norton that is not a state highway.
Any discussion? Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to say that, um, if this is approved here tonight, it does not mean that this goes into effect. This gives the, the Slatterman the authority to institute a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, however they feel is beneficial to the town. Uh, can pick a street, uh, whatever the Board decides to do. And off the chief.
Chief Clark.
Uh, good evening. This came up, uh, most recently with some conversation about speeding vehicles on South Worcester Street. Um, and this is, the legislature enacted this a few, a few years ago, and it really is just another tool that the, uh, the Board of Select would be able to use to assist, um, lowering speed limits in town. I'm in favor of the article, not in favor of a blanket policy where we had, where we do every single street in town, I don't think that's necessary, but, um, you know, the, I think one of the bigger complaints we get at the police department is traffic and speed, so, um, we got one today on West Hodges Street, and, uh, you know, if there's something that, uh, that the town could do to, to, uh, make the streets a little safer, it would be beneficial. Thank you.
Mr. Swain. Uh, yeah, please go to the microphone.
Mark Swain, fourteen Laurel Lane. Chief, are you the authority to set the speed limits in town? I'll try to make you get back up a second time.
No, the, the authority comes from the state through Mass DOT. If, if this is voted on tonight in the affirmative, then it would give the Board of Selectmen the authority to only change to a twenty-five mile an hour zone. You can't just randomly pick what the, what the speed limit's going to be on different streets, but it would be only a, in the thickly settled areas, and it would be a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on select streets.
Based on some kind of safety need, or something that is determined by the, the Select Board or yourself, or something like that?
Exactly. I would say specific, reasonable facts.
But who establishes, say, on John Scott Boulevard, which is close to South Worcester? Who would, who would, not that it's, whatever, I'm just using that as an example, who sets the thirty or forty mile an hour speed limit and something like that? Or who would set it in the past?
So, the state would do that, they'd come out and they'd do, uh, they'd do the eightieth percentile of the vehicles traveling that area. So, one of the things that always comes up is, you know, when people want to reduce the speed limit, what you've got to be careful of is if, if you're picking the eightieth percentile of the speed, it could actually increase. So, um, if the state looked at that, you know, a, a specific street, they could actually increase the speed versus decrease it.
Okay, so it's the state that does it, not the?
Mass DOT.
And not the Norton Police Department? I was always, I was, I always thought it was you.
I don't have that power yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Jim Jarden, 135 North Worcester Street. I was just wondering, um, what percentage of the total miles of roadway in Norton fall under a thickly settled and business or, and/or business district? If, if we even know the answer to that.
I'm sure somebody is going to offer that information. Mr. Town Manager.
Well, somebody is going to say, "I really don't have any idea on that." So, thickly settled is anywhere where there's houses, um, closer than two hundred feet, for a quarter of a mile, so. And, and not state highways, as the chief said, and also, uh, congested business areas.
Yes, sir.
Uh, hi, Mr. Moderator. William Francis, 66 Plain Street. Uh, this is a good idea, I guess, in theory, but the fact of the matter remains, you can enforce the speed limits that we have now, so I'll just see what difference we'd make by lowering them to twenty-five miles an hour. I mean, on Plain Street where I live, it's a, speeding is a constant problem. People go down that street at sixty miles an hour. Most people, even though it's a school area, the LG noise during the winter and the fall through the spring, and then during the summer, when there's baseball games going on at the, at the ballpark, people still speed on here. I think we have to enforce the laws that we have first, enforce the speed limits, before you decide to go around and change the limits. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My thoughts are somewhat, uh, akin to the previous speaker. Currently, a thickly settled zone has a speed limit of thirty miles an hour, so I don't know that thirty versus twenty-five is going to make a dramatic difference. And, uh, it reminds me of the adage, "Be careful what you wish for, you just might get it." All this is going to do is invite neighborhood after neighborhood, and since our zoning, the, the bulk of our zoning has two-hundred-foot frontages, this could apply to virtually any part of town, but the law doesn't define is what a business district is. So, is one business going to constitute applicability of this, of this law? Residentially, it's two hundred, an average of two hundred feet for a distance of quarter mile. There's no definition for a business district. So, you could be driving along and Bill's ice cream stand constitutes a business district, and all of a sudden you're going to get a, a ticket because you're doing more than twenty-five, or even thirty miles an hour now. Uh, if, in fact, this is going to pass, then I move currently that article be amended by adding that all areas affected by the passage of the article be posted with twenty-five mile an hour speed limits, uh, signs, to, so at least people know what they're encountering.
Okay, do you have that writing, in writing, Mr. Fernandez?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, I'm going to recognize Town Council.
Yeah, I will just tell you that the signs do have to be posted. Really, the Select Board will have to make any kind of a decision about any, um, changes to the speed limits in a public meeting, you know, after notice has been, um, posted there for, and in order to be able to, uh, enforce the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, signs have to be posted. Um, my concern about this motion, um, through you, Mr. Moderator, is that I'm not sure what the state requires, and it's really the state's decision about how the signage has to be displayed. All the rules relative to signage do not originate here in town, they originate at the state level.
Okay, um, so, then, Council, I, I imagine what you're saying is that the, the amendment may not be in order because it requires something that is not within the power of the town to do, is that?
My concern is just that the word may be inconsistent with what the state requires. Signage is required for, on, on our receipts.
Okay, um, this looked like such an easy article when it first came up. Okay, Mr. Fernandez, would you agree to change your amendment to just the words, with the understanding that signs would be properly posted?
Look, if I may.
Sure.
I'd gladly add pursuant to Chapter Ninety, which is, I believe, what governs the posting of signs. So, I, I'll come back, add that.
I can write that in for you, too. Okay, Mr. Fernandez, I'll, I'll just need you, you can do it after, just, I need you to come up and sign with your name and address on it, uh, too. Um, okay, we have, uh, a motion to amend the article by adding, um, and actually, I have to put it in the proper frame, excuse me one second while I just discuss with Mr. Fernandez. I'm hoping it's not going to be an upside-down. Okay, we have a motion to amend that would, make sure I've got this right, that would add the words, it, I, I, so, Joe, you're okay with just adding the words pursuant to Chapter Ninety?
Yep.
Okay. So, by adding the words pursuant to Chapter Ninety on the end of the, uh, of the motion. So, does everyone understand that we would just be adding the words pursuant to Chapter Ninety at the end of what was currently moved at the, the, uh, motion? Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second? Okay, we will now open the floor to any discussion on the amendment. Is there any discussion, comments, or questions specifically on the amendment? Keith, are you upset on the amendment? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amendment to Article Three, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, Article Three passes by majority vote, as declared by the moderator. We'll now move to Article, that was just the amendment?
So, Article Three.
Article, so now we're still voting on Article Three?
Yes.
Yep.
As amended, yes. So, now, we're back to, the main motion is Article Three as, as amended, so we'll now discuss and vote eventually on Article Three as amended. Mr. Silver.
Yeah.
Yeah, Keith Silver, Highway Superintendent in town Norton. Um, I've been doing this for thirty years, and twenty-five, thirty isn't going to make a difference. We spend a lot of money on signs every year, putting thirty mile an hour signs up. Uh, Mr., uh, Chief Clark, he got a grant, we put flashing signs up. I live on Plain Street, thirty mile an hour, people do forty, they do fifty. North Washington Street, same thing. South Washington, same thing. Stop signs, they don't even see them, right by them. I love the fact that we can maybe slow them down, you are not going to slow people down, and we don't have enough cops in this town to look at everybody. I see them, I see them down the railroad tracks looking at people, they, they stop them, they, they're trying to do their job, but there's people cut through our town that's going to go somewhere, or someone's in a hurry. I don't even know if I can plow snow at twenty-five mile an hour, because we got a big snowstorm. Seriously, because you can't get the snow off the road doing twenty-five mile an hour, you get a twenty-four inch storm, totally. I'm just saying, thirty, I tried to do twenty-five last week, and my wife is just laughing at me. Okay, this is, this ain't going to work, but, that's all I'm saying. I, I, I agree what you're trying to do, but I don't think it's going to work, it's just going to be a lot of mon, a lot of money putting signs up, and we're going to have to put them up, and we're going to be in the same, same problem.
Thank you. Yes, Madam, Slackwood though.
Hi, I'm Christine Devoe, um, fourteen Holly Road. You can tell this is my first time talking up here. Um, so, one of the reasons why I am in support of this is because it's not really, well, in theory, everybody's supposed to go twenty-five, but it's really for those who are going forty, when you're supposed to be going thirty. If you can get people to go thirty in a twenty-five, if you can just start to habitualize people, I feel that more and more people are going to agree and see others going slower, because you're going to get stuck behind those who are doing what they're supposed to do and go twenty-five. Um, so, it's just supposed to start, it's not going to be perfect, there are going to be people who are still going forty, and they want to go twenty-five, or they should be going twenty-five, but it's supposed to just start habitualizing people to notice and recognize, "Oh, this is twenty-five now, it's not thirty," so, thank you.
Any other discussion or debate? Yes, sir.
George Hatch, 381 South Worcester Street, and thank you, uh, Keith. There are signs on both ends of Woodard, posted for wait. I asked the police officer why they didn't take it, not authority, no authority. We have a sign, one of these flashing signs, and these trucks are still coming. The only trucks that, yes, people are talking about the trucks slowing down on South Worcester Street, and the reason that they're slowing down is because they're using engine brakes, looking for the gate, but the people that know where it is, they're still moving. Signs don't mean anything. There are signs coming out of a gate that says no right turn, you can ask anybody on South Worcester Street. They are semis and, and box trucks. Don't put up any more signs. We don't need them. We, we spent a lot of money tonight with a TIF, let's save some money on signs. Thank you.
Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins.
Peter Wiggins, Honorary Mayor, Knott one fifty-seven Metzger Ave. I'm supporting the article because I am avid walker, and I walk on along a side road a lot of times, and I see speed limits at twenty-five and thirty miles an hour, and I see cars go by, and it's time that we approve this article number three. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, make sure you walk less than twenty-five miles an hour. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I have a question about speeding tickets. We said that signs don't work, I have to, I have to agree with that. And, but if people, if people get a ticket, and their ticket hits them hard, I think they're gonna think about and say to other people, hey, you gotta watch out in these streets, slow down. Who sets the cost of the ticket?
Chief, you wanna answer that one? You might want to sit in the front row next time, you don't have so far to go.
That is set by the state legislature. So they're the ones that set the fines.
I was down in Rhode Island, and I was guilty, and I was in a school zone, and I was on a main street, and there were signs up saying, I think the speed limit was twenty, or whatever it was, right? And schools were closed, but they had cameras there, right? And a number of different places on the main street. Well, I must have been doing more than twenty miles an hour. I might have been doing twenty-five, thirty, I don't know, but not speeding. But I got a ticket. Is there any way that on some of these roads, could you put a piece of equipment up that's not too expensive, but could take pictures and record and ticket people? Because I know that, you know, you fellas, you're thin, you can't be everywhere.
The short answer is no. The legislature took that up last year, and it, it didn't come out with a positive response. So there are no red light cameras, there are no, no type of violation cameras that can be installed.
It's too bad that on these, on these portable speed limit signs that you guys have, right? And they flash lights. It's too bad that when they flashed a light, they didn't take a picture. But anyways, I think, you know, I think you're right, you can't be everywhere. But if you could take, when there is people, when there is people that are guilty and you're there, then hit them hard with it. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but that's the only way it works.
Thank you. Gentlemen, over on my left.
Thank you, William Francis, excuse me, sixty-six Plain Street. I just wanted to reinforce that. I drive in Boston, a great deal, and they have all the flashing signs that say twenty-five miles an hour. Nobody obeys the sign. So in theory, this might be a nice thing to think, that people are going to do the right thing, the kind thing, and slow down. But the fact of the matter, the reality of the matter is, they don't. Especially in a town that doesn't have a lot of sidewalk, so it makes it more dangerous that we're not enforcing the laws we already have. So I oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Paul Rowasi, three twenty-five Gottfried Drive. Let me ask, I'm sure there's representatives from the selectmen here tonight. How are they going to get away from, if this is gonna be, some neighborhoods are gonna ask for this? Can I have, I see the feeding frenzy. I don't want to be neglected. They got this sign in my neighborhood, what about mine? How are you going to, I thought, I see it almost as a, like pitting in one neighborhood against another, a little bit. It's gonna be a tough thing to police, I would think, with decision-making.
Thank you. Mr. Select Board Chair.
Good evening. I think I can speak for the Select Board when I say that none of us are traffic experts. So we would rely on recommendations from NPD and Chief Clark and his team as to what changes, if any, would need to be made. And if I may, Mr. Moderator, just to some of the earlier points about signs not doing much, I agree a sign in and of, but in and of itself, won't do anything, but it is another tool in the arsenal for our police department to levy enforcement actions. I've spoken to a number of residents that have concerns with speeding trucks on their, on their street. Mr. Haas, in particular, with Home Market, one of your neighbors as well, all over town. This is another tool in the arsenal that we can use to try to change behavior. In and of itself, it's probably not enough, I agree, but the alternative is to do nothing, and we continue on with the same problems that we have. So I would strongly consider you approve this measure to allow Chief Clark to make some improvements in speed limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Zach Tillis, Richmond Drive. I would challenge everybody here tonight, when they leave, to attempt to drive twenty-five miles an hour home. And tell me if it's even feasible. There's nobody that's gonna drive down Plain Street at twenty-five miles an hour, down John Scott, down Worcester Street. It's really ridiculous. I mean, Keith was right, he can't even plow at twenty-five miles an hour. I mean, I'm all for some kind of universal speed limit. I know other communities that did it, you know, I grew up in Brockton, and I think they have one that's thirty-five miles an hour. I don't know the legality of all that, but this is unenforceable. You're putting the chief in a bad spot, in my view. And it's just, nobody is gonna get up to go to work in the morning and drive twenty-five miles an hour. It's, you could put it in the books, but it's not gonna happen. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article Three? Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm sure, it's all right.
No, my eyes were too high.
Good catch. Pat Tarantino, two twelve, Tottenham Avenue, Norton. I, it seems to me that this is coming up because of few streets that have problems, and I'm sure that there, I know South Worcester does have a problem down there. But rather, and I know, Chief Clark, you have your hands full, and the guys are there, but maybe on days when you know there's a problem, and you know the window, you can send someone out there and start hitting those trucks. It seems to me we can address the few streets that we have problems with, rather than go through the expense of putting new signs up, as Keith said, and going through particular streets that you have to now go twenty-five. I don't think my car goes twenty-five, I'm sorry. Don't listen, Chief. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, if there's a misconception out there, this does not institute a blanket twenty-five mile an hour speed limit in any spot. This just allows the NPD to make a recommendation to the Select Board for specific areas, all of which would be publicly posted for meetings and discussed in open session with residents allowed to come in and speak to it. So this, this is not, when you walk out of here, if this proves that one twenty-three is gonna be a twenty-five mile an hour zone, that would be crazy. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Vagelis, twelve Downing Drive. My problem with all of this is it gives the selectmen the power to determine which streets are twenty-five miles an hour. I live off Bird Street, and I walk my dogs on Bird Street. I take my life in my hands every time I'm on that street. I know what it's like. I specifically drive the speed limit on Bird Street. Just because I know what I go through, it's not easy. And you're asking for twenty-five miles an hour? I find it interesting that there's more conversation about this and the added expense that we're incurring to change signs than the money we left on the table with giving a TIF to a company. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote on Article Three. All those in favor of Article Three, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Oh, boy. All right, let's do this one more time. All those in favor of Article Three, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article Three fails, as declared by the moderator. Is there any other business to come before this meeting? Hearing none, I declare the annual, the special town meeting to be adjourned. Thank you for coming.